District.
It does not. Yep.
How long are you projecting that to continue with the cost of sweat?
Probably another year or two. I mean, once, once we're around three hundred thousand dollars. But again, we can, we can change what we levy for that at any point, so. So then the next fund I will point out is um Fund ninety, Fire Prevention and Safety. So this is the one that's known as Health Life Safety. And this is the one that every ten years, our architect does a study or a survey of our buildings. It makes a determination of what projects we need to do based on things that are out of code or broken, or you know, if doors aren't shutting properly, we have to remedy those situations. If the boiler's, you know, out of date or needs maintenance or what have you, then we have to remedy those things. So we this year purposefully put some projects in to that Fire Prevention and Safety, knowing that the survey was going to be done this year and that, once that is done. So the architects go through, they make this list, they send it to Grover and Wes and Darren and Grover. And I sit down and look at it with the architects and say, yep, we, we agree, these are the things that need to be fixed. And then it goes to the ROE and the ROE says, yep, those are the projects you need to do. And they send it to the state and the state then sends it back and says, but we have these questions about these things. So then the architect has, you know, it's, it's a lot of back and forth and that's what we're doing right now. It's, it's done from our standpoint, but the state and the architect are sending things back and forth. And like today, Grover and I got an email that they needed an update on our asbestos, so. So all of those things go to say, we purposefully put some projects in here, knowing that they were going to fall under Health Life Safety and that, once that survey is done, that then unlocks avenues for revenue to do those projects. So you have the ability to levy for more money for Health Life Safety. You have the ability to bond for some of those projects. So we knew that we were going to put more in that um, in that fund in terms of projects than what we were going to bring in in revenue, because once that survey's done, we'll then determine what projects we have to do and how we're going to pay for those projects. So the other thing is um, there's a, quite a list of things that the architects found at the square building, which it's old and we know that it's somewhat out of date. But that was also purposeful because we're looking at getting building replacement funds. Instead of correcting those things at the square building, you can get funds to build elsewhere, to replace that building. So instead of fixing the square building, we add classrooms to this building. So again, somewhat purposeful. So if you look at those two funds, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of um, overage that was somewhat purposeful. And then the, the last one that I'll point out specifically is the Transportation um Fund. We've been levying less because we have had such a healthy balance there. And even after two hundred thousand dollars of deficit spending, we're still over five hundred thousand dollars in that fund. So if you remember last year, we talked about the purchase of two buses um, going on this year. So we knew that we levied and had enough revenue for all of our expenses in transportation, minus the purchase of those two buses. So we knew that we were going to deficit spend in transportation, because I think the buses were a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And actually, our revenues were a little bit more than what we thought. So it's, it's not quite two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in deficit spending, so. So though, between those three funds, um, you know, that's about half of our deficit. Then in the Educational Fund, Operations and Maintenance, um, and uh, yeah, the, between those two, that's where the majority of our deficit spending is. But the, really, the majority of it is for one situation, situational thing that has come up with a student that's in a residential setting. So um, we talked that the cost of that is only partially reimbursed and that's in the rear. So what we're spending this year, um, we will only be partially reimbursed next year. So the expense is going to be very high this year. The reimbursement for last year is very minimal. So that's a, it's a costly thing that makes up the majority of that deficit, so.
Is that the, is that what's in payments to other districts?
No, you don't have the right sheet.
Oh, I don't?
Go to the front page.
Oh, thank you.
No, she doesn't have the page. I put it in there.
Oh, you didn't? Okay.
That's.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's hard when you have the wrong page and someone's saying numbers, right?
Some of them matched up.
So if you look on page uh, four.
Yeah.
And you look down uh, airline line forty-one twenty, that, that's what you're looking for. That number, those numbers there.
So nineteen twelve and twenty-nine hundred are for that. And then forty-one twenty and forty-two hundred, that's for our Northwest Special Education.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I put, I grabbed the wrong ones. You're right.
So with the uh, decrease in our funding from the state and uh, and the, of the problem we have with the situation is looking at truth and taxation for next year.
Potentially.
Looking at.
Potentially.
Can get caught up and we're not going to be.
Yeah. So we met tonight and we really focused on this school year. So I told the Finance Committee, this is probably a series of two or three meetings. Tonight, we looked at this year and some little things that we could do this year. But I said, really, the little things you can do this year are just kind of more annoying to the people that are sitting in the back of the room, because it's like, the stuff where it's like, are you really going to take that away and make, you know, my job less, you know, easy? You know, for a couple hundred dollars or a couple thousand dollars, it's more of an annoyance than anything. Really, in the next series of meetings, we'll look kind of at three to five years. And it's kind of those major things, you know, that we can do in terms of, are there some things we can cut? Yes. Is there some ways we can generate revenue? Yes. Is there some trends from the state that maybe we need to pay more attention to? Yes. So, so there'll be a series of meetings where we're kind of looking at those things.
I don't see the situation with the state getting any better.
I don't either. I'm just.
We don't want to go to.
Trying to be Pollyanna, Dan.
Gotta be able to.
Yeah.
We can't keep going backwards.
Yeah. So we'll look at each fund, like Transportation, we have the whole fleet list, the number of years, the age of each bus and maybe instead of buying, you know, one bus next year, maybe we wait a couple of years before we replace certain vehicles, you know? So eventually, you know, your buses and your trucks and your vans and those things have to be turned over, but maybe we can be less aggressive there and more aggressive on other things, so. Anything else, Finance Committee?
No, I just want to make a point that, you know, even though we did deficit, deficit spend out of our education fund, there were a lot of good things that came out of that as well, you know, with our, with our staff. We increased uh, benefits for the staff that, that cost us substantial money. However, what a great benefit of.
Well, that, that I understand is an investment, but we can't keep going in the rear.
No, I, I understand that as well.
We have the budget to compensate.
Exactly right. We do have the budget. And so to TJ's point earlier, one of the things that we talked about was getting a plan together so we know, like, we're going to control this and we're going to be able to have a plan moving forward on how we're going to dictate or actually put, get, get a, get this uh, grip on it and wrap ourselves around it. So we're not deficit spending.
I'll give a, I'll give a, for instance, and I didn't even talk about this to the Finance Committee, excuse me, but we talked, we talked about health insurance, you know? I think three years ago, teachers were paying the vast majority of a family plan out of their paycheck every month. Like, we were paying thirty-eight percent and they were paying the majority of it. So over the last three years, we've gone from thirty-eight percent to this year, we're paying seventy percent of a family plan for teachers. So that's an excess cost on the school district, obviously, and it's putting more, keeping more money in their paychecks as opposed to coming out. So there's, there's your investment in teacher retention, because we were saying for a number of years, we're losing teachers and when Wes or Darren and I would talk to them, they said, it, it's not necessarily the pay. It's all the money I'm not keeping because you're paying me okay, but I'm spending all of that money on health insurance. So we made this investment and next year, I think we go from seventy percent to seventy-five percent. And you know, that's kind of what we said, we wanted to get to seventy-five percent of a family plan. You know, the teachers' union was like, that would be great. We think as a district, that would be great. So, you know, that caps that big expense that the district is undertaking. We're going to keep paying that same amount, but it's not going to keep going up year after year. So this year, for instance, we went from, I think, sixty percent to seventy percent. So we had that extra ten percent and a nine percent increase in health insurance costs. So really, we kind of took a double whammy for health insurance, knowing that that was the investment that it was going to take to keep people and, and that. So that somewhat writes itself now. If we have a terrible year and our health insurance goes up twenty percent, then, you know, we're spending a lot out of our pocket, but that's to no one's fault, other than, you know, we had a bad year. If we have a good year, then, you know, that cost is very flat, so. You know, those are, those are the things that we have to kind of take a look at and.
And I agree that uh, we needed to do that for the employees. We needed this, and the exodus of our good teachers. But uh, we also need to be able to levy to offset it.
Sure. Yep. Yeah, absolutely.
I think too, I like what you're doing. I mean, I think like, just having the discussions it now versus having to make like, super hyper reactive decisions later. I think that's just, I like, I'm happy that you're moving in that direction and.
Yeah.
Because the last thing, I think, I think a lot of times when, you know, when, when it, when you wait too long, wait to the last minute, then that's when we start taking away things that just make their jobs harder. You know what I mean? So like.
Yeah, and I've been in school districts that have done that. And that's when it's like, okay, so we're going to save five thousand dollars, but really, all we did was tell teachers and paras and that, that they're just going to have to do three extra things. And it's annoying to them and then people get upset with us and that's like, that's not the point. You know, if we get to the point where we have to make some cuts and we sit down and we talk about it as a team and say, okay, where, where are the areas that we, that we can save? But I mean, I think we've made huge strides in terms of, you know, curriculum, technology, you know, and the investment in, in our teachers, so.
Yeah.
So I think we're, we're in a good place. Now, I told the, the Finance Committee, if I just took everything, like, if we just kept every trend going the way that it is, yeah, in five years, it's not gonna, it's not gonna look good. And so we certainly can't do that. But I think we have those conversations now and we can look at the next five years and say, okay, you know, this trend is not necessarily a trend, it's because of, you know, the, what, what we've been doing. And this one is a trend, so how are we going to alleviate some of that cost? Or how are we going to generate more revenue to, to deal with that situation? So, so there, like I said, there's some short-term things. Lisa and I have already kind of started the three to five year stuff, but for tonight's sake, for the budget's sake, it was just a focus on this year.
Are there any groups working on like, just efficiencies or identifying opportunities for efficiencies? That maybe like, stuff that could go away, that we would, like, more people would say, oh, finally, then?
The, the efficiencies really, I mean, the efficiency that we've focused on is getting on one campus. Being able to eliminate the elementary school and have it on the same campus creates a ton of efficiencies. To answer your question, no, there hasn't been, like, we haven't sat down and said, okay, you know, where are we being really inefficient and how can we change that? But I think that's probably what our conversations with this group and our administrative conversations leading into the Finance Committee will be. Other questions for the hearing? Okay.
Moving on, recognition of visitors and correspondence, we have missing calls.
So I'll introduce her. Carissa is, no, you can stand up and appro, approach the board, please. No. Carissa is our um, ELL teacher. And we talked, we talked last year at a board meeting that um, we thought we were going to lose Carissa. And I actually, I'm, I'm sorry, I know it breaks both of our hearts. I, I made her resign at one point this year, because Carissa's husband has moved to New Zealand and she wasn't sure if she was going to get a visa to follow her or not. So I said, you know, in fairness to everybody, I think I need you to resign and we need to find an ELL teacher for our kids. Well, Carissa wasn't going to move and so we brought her back and we were very excited to do so. Recently, Carissa's found out that she is going to be moving, but she is willing to work with our students virtually from her new home. So I'll let you take it from there. Is that a fair introduction?
Yes, thank you. Yes, my new home will be in New Zealand. And um, with the plan of um, possibly, there were, I really didn't know if I was. And I had been considering this plan for fourteen more years, but they still considered, because I knew that was seventeen, maybe I got good trouble when I was there, but I didn't. And so in case, it was very complicated. So yes, they would let me in. Yeah, but in the meantime, I had been planning just in case the board would allow me to teach virtually. I had developed a plan for how I was working with fourteen students ranging from kindergarten all the way to um, third-year high school, junior. For the lower elementary, I, I created monthly themes. And the reason is because I was having trouble with the HMH website. And I thought, if ever there is a glitch with the HMH website, I have to find it. So far, that website has, has been working very well. In addition to that HMH um, curriculum, I can read, read books to them online using um, the, the ability to share the screen. I have been in contact with Isaac from uh, PC Networks. And um, first, I had set up a Google Classroom for each of the students. But I talked to Isaac and he said to make it more fluid, that he would create a Google Classroom, for example, ELL@EBQHS.org with a persistent, persistent link. Of course, the word persistent is not official. What that means, all I know is they can use the same link for um, logging in. So each of those students will be able to use it. I have created widely strategies that I can, I can use, um, using my shared screen ability. I have a list of websites that they can use to supplement. We also have a paraprofessional who is available from nine fifteen till about eleven o'clock. And she works primarily with the Hispanic students that I have. We do have this student who's from India, but he speaks English. It's just that um, because there's another language spoken in the home, um, is part of my roster. But in the beginning of October, I'm going to plan on starting the online practice, me and my room in the elementary school and them in their classroom with headphones on so the kids don't hear, the other students don't hear my voice, but the students can hear mine. And with, with the paraprofessional helping to get them at least logged on. And I guess, I guess that's it. That's my plan.
So Wes and Darren and I talked about it and we said, we, we really want to keep Carissa. She's been fantastic for our students. But we said, you know what, let's try this. You're going to, you're going to leave in October and that gives us about a month and a half until the end of the semester to see how this virtual piece works. And if we need to make a change, and I was very transparent and said, if this doesn't work or if it's you teaching at two o'clock in the morning in New Zealand and you're falling asleep on our kids, then, you know, we'll, we'll pull the plug or do something different. Our hope is that, you know, because she had last year and the beginning of this year to, to practice this with kids and really get things rolling, that it'll still be successful, so. So we'll see. And we've been, we've been very honest with each other.
Yes.
I've, I've tried to kick her out, but then I brought her back and.
Not one of those teachers of yours.
I think it's worth trying. I mean, I think having a little forum with the kids is. When you bring in another one, you're going to take the whole rest of the year trying to get into place anyway. So I like the, let's try it, let's kind of.
Yeah.
And I'll be honest with you, when working with English language related families, it takes a good full three years to get their community trust. And you get the families on board and they support you with what you're doing, Richard.
Can you reach that three years?
Oh, my goodness, yes.
So are the times from nine fifteen to eleven, that one teacher?
No, that's with the elementary kids.
Okay.
Then I go and work with the high school kids, sort of, and then I go back to the elementary schools and I work with other students. Those students are self-sufficient, they can walk and run. Strong.
Sure. So I think your biggest adjustment would be time.
Yeah.
I think that's a wonderful idea. Thanks for being here.
I have to try, yeah. Those kids are so wonderful.
We thought she was a little crazy, but. So.
Very wishy-washy on that.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll go back.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wanted to address the board this evening?
Mr. Hire. The report for Mr. Hire is, be careful when you're riding ATVs. If you didn't know, Mr. Hire uh, fell off an ATV and broke his collarbone this past weekend. So he's at home on a high dose of dial and all right now. Yeah. So I know that you have this report and you can read it there. The open house, uh, always a big turnout at the elementary school and um, the boundless trailer was there, spent um, quite a bit of time and a lot of families receive um, goods and food and clothing and things from that. So um, it was a great night and a great night for our families there. The PTO meeting, I think Wes always tries to give a shout out to the PTO, because they really do a lot of stuff for the elementary school and the families. So we really appreciate, appreciate them and all that they do. So thank you to the PTO. And then the Kickoff to Reading Initiative, all I know is that there's, there's always pies in the face of people. And I'm not sure why, people are always getting pies in the face, but um, that's, that's, that's great. Anytime Wes can get a pie in the face and water dumped on him, that's, that makes the kids extremely happy. The importance is though, um, it's getting kids excited about reading and, and doing those things, so. So that's there. And then you can see the enrollment numbers um, really pretty steady at the elementary school there. So we have a one, couple bumper classes, our fourth grade's really high and sixth grade. So this will be the largest class we have coming up to the junior high in a few years from the elementary school. And it's really interesting that sixth grade class is really big, fourth grade's really big and fifth grade in between them is really, really low. But I guess in a community the size, that probably makes sense. If you, you know, bookends of big classes, you probably got a small one in between, so. Mr. Sirianni is at an awards ceremony for one of our students tonight and there'll be more information coming about that. So he is representing us at that. His report here, activities, everything is off and running. One of the things that we're doing at the uh, Junior High High School this year, la, the last few years, the Student Council students have read the announcements. Uh, Mr. Sirianni and I are doing the announcements this year and we're trying to um, acknowledge the activities and things that are happening in the classroom during those announcements. So, so that's been fun with uh, with so much going on in the fall. And I've only had a few teachers take me up on making announcements of things going on in the classroom, but hopefully, we'll be doing more of that. We're just trying to, we're trying to find a way to say every kid in the school's name on the announcements. Everyone will get their birthday announced, so they get that. But you know, something positive about each kid in the school, so. Uh, last week was Homecoming, everybody's favorite. Homecoming is over and done until next year. It was really early this year, so I don't know if that is a, a good thing or, or not. But um, it, you know, everyone's always excited during Homecoming week, so that was, that was fun. School Fall Play will take place November eighth and ninth. More to come on that at the October meeting, it looks like. And Corridor, um, we had a demonstration for staff a few weeks ago and then on October first, we'll have our training for the corridor system in this building. So um, we're, we're excited to get that up and fully going, so.
Just a quick question on.
Yeah.
Is, is there a reach out being done to families on the corridor?
Yep.
That will be part of that initial.
I have a homecoming. I've had some questions about, is there a way that parents can get, um, who would parents talk to to get involved in like, planning for like, the dance?
Usually it's.
Can probably talk about the after prom?
For, to get involved with the homecoming dance? Student council, the student council.
I, I can say my son said that it was a little bit less than thrilling.
Yeah.
Took a long time for music to be played. You know, I know things happen, but.
Yep.
And that's his point is, I've heard it, not just the show, but.
I, I think Student Council's taken it on, so it's been a lot student-directed. And so maybe it does need some more adult.
Yeah, how can we support them? Because that's, I feel like that's hard for them too. That's a lot of pressure on them to know the steps to take and.
I would go out with a class advisor for senior. Homecoming usually is senior event.
I think Student Council's taken more of a role the past couple of years, so.
My fear is.
I'll ask Mrs. Radisson. I'll have her.
I just don't want kids leaving the dance early to go do naughty things.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's a trend everywhere.
Yeah.
That's kind of become a thing. Like I, our homecoming dance used to be like, three hours long, three, three and a half hours long. Now it's two and like, I, I know, my kid went to the homecoming dance this year and he kind of said the same thing. But my kids, I went and debuted, but we had to make a rule in our house, if we're paying for a meal, you're going to the dance. Like, they just do not even go, so. It's just a thing now, so.
I have just one suggestion. One thing is just get a DJ.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would donate. As a parent, I would definitely donate to that.
A lot of, a lot of students came back to the junior high and it's like, oh, just a page, you know? The, the junior high dance was so much better and, and I think the DJ experience is just something they don't, don't get all the time.
Yeah.
So would they have live music or?
Some standard QR. I think it took a good forty-five to fifty minutes to get it started.
Which shouldn't be the case, because it's just a matter of the Bluetooth thing in, but.
Right.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know all the steps. I, I think they tried to create a list, like each kid was able to contribute songs to a shared list. And I think that created a technical issue, so. But yeah, the DJ piece is something that, that I heard this, this week, so. Anything else?
I mean, as a parent, I would, I would hope if there's like a weird...
I think it's just a matter of hiring the DJ.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the last, sorry to interrupt you. The last year, the, the snowball dance, they didn't use our junior high DJ. And I just told them, do not ruin the experience for them. We used him a long time and East of Buke, I'll tell you right now, I think this is a thing of pride. But I contacted him way back in twenty eighteen or so, twenty nineteen, and he's been our DJ. We use him twice a year. And he said, you're the only school that I will ever go to because your kids are rock stars. I've never had so many kids say thank you at the end of the dance as East of Buke kids do, so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
He only does us and he is, he's awesome, so.
From the district office, from maintenance side of things, we had our ROE and fire marshal inspection last week and had a few minor issues, not, not a whole lot there. Grover, do you want to explain what a water puck is?
Water puck? All right. Through our state insurance co-op, they did to all their schools, distributed water pucks, which look like a hockey puck. And they go in any of the maintenance closets, the boiler rooms, the kitchens, wherever you are expected to have a leak if any pipe breaks or whatever. So they sit on the ground in area where they would flow if, if the water breaks, if the water pipe would break. And then they, it has a sensor, it goes right to email, it goes to a call center. And they call me up and say, hey, you got water on the floor, running somewhere else. So to prevent flood, floods and everything. So I got one, I got a call, I don't have any leaks or anything, no. So that was pretty, pretty interesting how they got things set up, so.
On the transportation side, not in Jeff's report, but today, Jeff walked into my office and said, hey, there's two guys from the state here inspecting our fleet. I said, oh, did you know they were coming? No, we didn't, but they came and they inspected the fleet and we're good to go, so. The other thing that's not on Jeff's report is we had, well, we, we have one driver that's going through the process of becoming licensed. Ed is doing that. And Wes was also going through the process of getting his...
Now he's on the shelf?
And he's now on the shelf. And I went to Galena to do the initial bus training on Saturday. And they sent me an email at four o'clock on Friday of homecoming week and said that tomorrow morning's training is canceled. So I showed up in Galena last Saturday and it was canceled. So now I have to go to Freeport in November.
TJ, is that the infamous Eddie Gao from the Donut Boy?
It is that same, one and the same, yeah.
How long is Wes out for? Do we know?
He was back at school for half the day today. I went down about lunchtime to check on him and had to send him home because he, he thought he could go do recess duty. And by the time we walked down to recess duty, he was turning colors. And I, I think he's in a little bit more pain than, you know, he's getting to that age, you know, where still act like we're twenty, but we're not. So some of us learn that lesson and some of us don't. I won't say any more than that, so. From the district office, the cyber bullying piece is just really interesting to me. So obviously we've eliminated phones from schools or, you know, have done, you know, taking big steps towards eliminating the use of phones in schools. And I would say, I think the teachers would agree that they're not seeing them in the classroom. We're not seeing them in the lunchroom. Every once in a while, someone will try and sneak one somewhere, you know, bathroom or something. But we're just, we're not seeing it. But I have dealt with now two cyber bullying incidents at the high school this year. And yesterday I was at the elementary school for Wes, he was out yesterday. And I took a phone call and it dealt specifically with cyber bullying. So it's just one of those things that, you know, we, I was asked by the parent, like, hey, this happened at home, do you deal with it? And I said, absolutely. If it's something that's coming into school or, you know, we have all the parties here, we absolutely will deal with it. But it's just one of those things that's kind of been hot and heavy the last few weeks, so. I, I gave a description there for the board, but also want you to know, we, we do take these things seriously and we do work through these issues with families and, and try and work with everyone as best that, that we can, so.
Just for some affirmation around that, TJ, we are following our policies as we're dealing with these, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
What, so when is it a school, when is it school versus outside? Like, you know what I'm saying? When is it, when is it within our jurisdiction or whatever as a school?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not as, it's not as clean cut or as easy as just saying, if it happens at school, it's a school issue. If it happens outside of school, it's not, you know. And when I was an elementary principal, I had two kids getting in a fight off of school grounds on their way home from school. And to me, they're both students at our school, they're going to come back to school tomorrow, so I'm going to deal with it. And one of the parents was very appreciative that I dealt with it, and one of them was very upset, you know. Happened in my yard, you don't need to worry about that situation. So it's, it's murky, but if there's an incident where kids are doing something in a group or like the cyber bullying and it's happening after hours and it's happening at home, there's no way that it's not coming back into school. There's no way that it's not going to be talked about, dealt with. These guys are going to hear it all day the next day. So to me, there's very few things that aren't school business, you know. The, the kids, the kids go to school here and anything that's going to lead to fallout here at school, we're just better off dealing with it than saying, ah, that's, that's yours, that happened on your time, so. The frustrating part is, especially with the cyber bullying stuff, is when it doesn't happen here and it's on social media, which we, you know, here we have a little bit of control of it or, you know, a lot of control because they don't have their phones. But at home, we, we have no control over what's being done on social media. So all we can do is really react to it and then ask parents to be proactive. But, but yeah, we still deal with those situations.
And I, I asked TJ to put together a student parent advisory committee meeting to talk through, you know, if there's more to be done. I want, I asked him to review the policies. Just the other thing.
Yeah. We have, and we have a high school parent who has had some issues with bullying and really questioned us about bullying. So I invited him to come to that advisory meeting. I think the people that are on that committee got an invite to that already, but I'll make sure that, I'll make sure that that goes out to more parents. I mean, there's targeted parents that I know that we want there, but we'll invite more than just those few people, so. So that will be coming up in October.
Yeah, I'm appreciative as a board member that we are, we, you, Darren, Wes, are addressing these issues as they come up and not, you know, turning, well, this didn't happen in school. Because to your point, yeah, it does.
Yeah.
It's built...
I mean, well, and I mean, these are the people to ask, like, you get a lot of kids that come to school really happy every day and then one day they're not. Well, there's a reason. It's happened at home, but they still have to deal with it, so. You know, let's, let's deal with it, so. So we have that coming up. And then I feel like I upset people by starting school early this year. I looked at the calendar and I was like, man, we were off for three full months. There was like thirteen weeks off of school, which is, you know, if you look at research, that's terrible. We should never do that. But I had more people say, why is school starting so early? This is awful. So I said, you know what, I'm having a calendar committee early this year. We're going to start talking about it except if nothing else, we're going to educate people about what it means when you're outside of school for so long, but...
I thought it started the same week it last year.
Yes, yeah.
Like the first Friday of the month was like the first...
For some reason, people felt like it started way earlier. I was like, I promise it didn't, but I don't know that I can convince them other than to invite them to a calendar committee meeting.
Problem is, was we already got parent teacher advisory committee at five o'clock that day.
Yeah, I saw that. Well, I'll have to change one of those, so.
Either the date or the time?
Yeah, I will just change the time on one of them, so. So that's it from the district office.
I was just going to go back to the elementary school. This is the first year that I've not had a kid at the elementary school for fifteen, sixteen years. And I look and I see three other parents, board members that don't have a kid in the elementary school building. So I'm crazy.
Steve is going to have to speak loudly on behalf of the elementary kids.
Be there for a while.
It goes fast, man. Goes fast.
All right. Anything else for... Oh, thanks TJ.
You bet.
Moving on to unfinished business. Is there anything anybody would like to discuss?
Yeah. Reminder, ISAB's, IASB's Fall Meeting, October second. It's Thursday, it's in Winnebago. I'm going, can we leave? About three thirty.
Okay.
That's okay?
I think I sent a reminder on that today too.
Nine twenty-five, yeah.
The speaker is going to be Dr. Tony Sanders, the Illinois Superintendent of Schools. And the subject's going to be ISB's strategic priorities for student success. Anybody wants to go with Dave and I and just have Tracy sign you up, we're going. If you want to do it virtually, you still have to register, pre-register. And they will send you the link site on the first.
I think the deadline's soon too.
The twenty-fifth?
October second, thank you. Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other unfinished business? Moving on to new business, seven point one is informational items. FOIA from Northwest Illinois News for names of graduates from middle school and high school.
Yeah, so we notified Owen that we do not have a graduation from middle school or junior high, so.
Has anybody ever read the Northwest Illinois News?
I don't know, but we sure get a lot of FOIAs from, from him.
My, my question before the meeting is giving out names of students, something we want to be doing? Is can they legitimately FOIA for names of our students?
Do we want to? No. I mean, we can be FOIA'd for certain things. And then if we, so let's say we did have names and we didn't want to share them, we would have our attorney write them a letter and try and block it, but, you know, then there, there's recourse they can take for it. But we just, we kind of skirted it by saying we don't have a junior high graduation.
Seven point two is informational FOIA from Smart Care for bills from February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, nine five, two thousand...
That's a common one that we, we get Smart Care quarterly.
Seven point three is informational FOIA from Northwest Illinois News for AP scolastic students.
Again, it was kind of an odd, never seen that FOIA before. It was kind of an odd one, so.
Seven point four informational FOIA from Justin Pat, Get Star Jump for bills from one one, two thousand twenty-one, eight thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
Thankfully, we can do that electronically.
Seven point five is informational FOIA from Northwest Illinois News for contracts of all school principals and all active teachers in collective bargaining agreements.
So one of the school districts in our county did contact their attorney about this one. And they were advised to go ahead and share. I mean, the collective bargaining agreement's on the website anyway, so that's not a big deal. But, and contracts are public knowledge, but they were advised to share, so. Just FYI.
And then moving on, seven point six informational item, AED donation application.
So we have, a few of our AEDs are getting pretty old. So, you know, we, we've changed the pads and batteries on a regular basis, but some of them now are more than fifteen years old. You're advised to change those out every ten years. Phil Arndsdorf from NICC and he's a fireman in Dubuque. We, he advises us and he said, you know, ten years, probably a little aggressive. They probably last longer than that, but you've got a few that are over fifteen years old, so let's get those changed out. So Lisa did do a grant trying to get, this, it's a donation grant piece to try and get some of that paid. But we, we know we'll have a cost for some of these. The good thing is when you turn in the old ones or when you, you know, buy new ones, you can get three hundred dollars back for your old ones. So, so there's some offsetting costs to it, but, you know, just to make the board aware that we are looking at those things.
Yeah, you hope to never need them, but when you do need them, you want to make sure that works.
Yeah.
You complain about the cost and then hope that it never pays for itself.
Yeah.
All right. Seven point seven is an informational item, insurance renewal.
Yeah, so you have in your packet there the information about the insurance renewal from, through Conco, through, for Medical Associates.
Did they give anything? Because that Lisa didn't give me anything about what...
They didn't. Well, just for your information, the insurance renewal was nine percent this year. So when we met with Conco, you remember last year it came back pretty high and we asked them to go back to Medical Associates and they did, and they ended up lowering it for us. We had quite a few costs last year. So when we met with Chance and Aaron, who they're absolutely great to work with, they said, you know, we can go back again. And I said, well, I don't, I feel like it's one of those situations. If we go back every year, then they're just going to start bumping the cost, knowing that we're going to go back every year. So I said, it's, it's somewhat justified in the costs. Let's not go back this year. You know, let's deal with the nine percent and hope that that buys us some good faith, that, you know. Because it, it's really been pretty consistent and pretty steady. And if I ask the districts around us over the past, you know, five, six, seven, eight years, we really have been lower than most of the school districts. You know, there'll, there'll be a year or two where someone might be lower than us by a percentage or two. But we've never had, you know, like a sixteen percent year and someone else has a four percent. They're really pretty consistent and ours have been, have been pretty good. Medical Associates has been pretty good to us. And I think if you talk to the staff, they, they really like the providers that we have. Most people would not want to change providers, so. So we feel, we feel good. We did have a high year in terms of costs. So, I mean, the nine percent made sense.
Any questions on that? Seven point eight is an action item to approve the budget that we discussed during the budget hearing.
My second.
As to moves and Angie's second, excuse me, to approve the budget as presented during the budget hearing. We broke up with...
Shower, I sent.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Fulton. Dahlberg.
Aye.
Foot.
Aye.
I am going to be passing around, there's two different copies of the budget hearing approval that you need to sign, whether or not you're a senior or a junior. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate it. Any other new business? Moving on to personnel.
So the first one there, I feel like that informational one probably needs a little explanation. Lacey was someone that we had hired to work in the high school as a paraprofessional. And then for personal reasons, she wasn't able to come in and even start that position. So she, she never did work for us, but because the board approved it, I thought that you should know that. She never did work for us, but because the board approved it, I thought that you should know that this person was approved, but has not. Come to work for us, so she will, will not be an employee here.
And Ms. Baum, when is, gonna be for that position or is that a good?
She's part of the, part of the time, she's doing that position, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel stated.
I'll second it. Move by Dan, second by Dan to approve personnel stated, roll call this.
Cent?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Fulton? Dahlberg?
Aye.
Foot?
I'm gonna abstain.
And Shower.
I made Beams abstain, too.
I abstain because I prefer, like.
Same, I wrote a letter of recommendation, so I don't know that.
Doesn't, but if you don't wanna be, uh, if you feel like you're not impartial, then.
That's true, I do feel, I, I'm not.
It's okay to be not impartial. It's okay, since there's seven, yeah, we're good.
Alright, then, uh.
If we wouldn't have been able to hire Tara, I will say I would have been mad at both of you, cause she's been fantastic.
Alright, so then, uh, executive session, uh, are we needing both?
No, just the second one.
So we are needing to go into executive session for five ILCS one twenty slash two C ten, uh. For special education. Is that correct?
We'll just go to Mrs. Schultz's classroom. I do, thank you ma'am, you're the best.
Yep, they're all, everybody signed?
I'll give you this for now and then.
Okay, thank you.
Are you, I haven't seen you in a while.
I know, right?
I'm in Minnesota, I need to go teach. Spent, it's one of vacation, we went up there, um. niece and nephew. Really? You didn't trust Cody with your face?
Yeah, and then they opened up.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, well, tell him I said hi, you know, I bring him up all the time when I'm, I'm reminiscing, cause Alex was number two in the class. And dropped me down to number three, unfortunately, so I get a sore torn hand, you know.
Try a little bit harder.
I tried really hard, gosh, who was that one? Is that one social studies? Now, Darren, I see. Are you, are you back here for a while? Oh, what's that? What'd you say?
I'll just, I'll tell Andrew not to worry about it.
I talked to him, I told him I was gonna do that, but he just coordinated that, so.
I think the reason they want you here is.
I, I think he was under the impression that he had to bring it up to you. No, just, I just hand, just hand it to you and just leave it in that hole and. Everything's, it's activated and everything, so.
Perfect, thanks Grover.
What's, uh, I have a question. What's, uh, the L S M, uh, what's the wait time? It's like.
Alright.
Like the, the, I get that notification.
I can't.
That's fine. Yeah, that's, that's.
Uh, no, we still need these from.
No, ours.
Well, it was a weekend, maybe.
Yeah, that's what they say, it's good.
Before, like, covering her, I think you write.
Um, yeah, probably, I'm gonna would have seen this.
I know it's familiar, I think. I'm a good person, I'm a good, I don't get in trouble.
She was the only one, when we went down to Springfield, she was the only one that got pulled, pulled aside by security.
Every single year, every single year, I truly.
But I, I have a question.
No, I get, every time I go to scanners at the courthouse, I get it.
That's his choice, sir, he was.
Yeah.
I should really like.
Yeah.
Yes, awesome, you know, just. Great, became a very good commanding, you know, presence. Exactly. I, I almost hate to say this, cause sometimes we, you know, joke about, and then kicking him around the whole man. Like, he is a very harsh person. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I think so, is he still like part of the squad? Or is he?
Yeah. You know, we, um, you know, kind of the way that is. The timing was just kind of perfect and he kind of stepped into that. Stepped into that role, so he kind of tried to be the one that not have to call down, having come on working, you know, pretending like before and more, sure. Um, some excess, not to stay around.
Yeah, yeah, oh, is that it? Yeah. So I suppose in love, in love, you know, there are some emergencies, you have to show the proper. You know, and more, just, he worked Monday, Friday, Wednesday, you know, Monday, Saturday, I don't know. While you're, while you're, you know, spent all week working for the.
No, I think he's a very positive and bold here.
He's awesome, yeah, he's very good. The kids seem to know him.
That's huge.
No, no offense against. It was different, different relationship, yeah.
And I think for Dad said, who are you?
It's changed so much, yeah. You know, it was totally different, even just, I mean, no entrance where it was just. Yeah, it went on, just, it made it, it was like it was lost or anything. Haven't been the old same here since they started reviewing things, I think.
I don't know why I haven't, um. I don't go to that company.
Oh, yeah, and, yeah, you know.
Down there?
Uh, it's like the parish hall, so everything's gotta change.
Oh.
There's, they, they redid some stuff. It's just all kind of.
Because we talked about taking our junior high down.
That would've been awesome.
But we were told, no, if it's a building in such a rain that.
Yeah, it's. I think they do maybe community events, um. Good times.
Yeah, thanks for your attention.
Yeah, thank you.
Marking down is.
Yeah, crazy, that's, until next time.
Those numbers.